Welcome to our city council meeting, your city council meeting on this Monday, December 5th. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos? Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Vois. Mr. Vois is muted.
You're on mute.
Oh, shoot.
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Amos indicated that he wouldn't be here with us this evening already due to another scheduled meeting. So, I guess we have our moment of silence, so if you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening, since Mr. Amos, Ward Force City Council member is not here, I'm gonna ask former Ward Force City Councilwoman, Ms. Willie Mae Wright, if she would please lead us in the pledge. Where is Ms. Willie Mae at?
Her representative is right here.
Okay, so you're gonna have to, you know how to do that? All right, so we'll follow your lead. So just start us out and we'll all join in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did a fine job.
All right, I make a motion to approve the agenda as well as the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 regular session as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda and minutes. Is the presentation ready, Chris, or do we go to? All right. First up on the agenda, we have a presentation from student presentation on environmental, social health vulnerabilities in Waterloo. So could you please step up to the podium? If you state your name and address for the record, we'll just have one of you do it.
Hi, my name is Levi Reese. I'm part of a class taught by Dr. Belinda Creighton Smith that you and I. It's an American minorities class, and this is going to be our presentation about environmental injustice. These are all the group members we have here. Next slide. Okay. What is this presentation about? According to the EPA, environmental injustice is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. This concept is of particular concern for this Waterloo area. Our group has been found, and Ms. Carol Yates has helped point us out some necessary data in order to make this presentation possible. So thank you to her. Today, we're gonna be covering topics such as redlining, superfund sites, and general disparities in quality of living between certain communities around Cedar Falls in Waterloo. So, redlining is the discriminatory practice in which services are withheld for potential customers who reside in neighborhoods classified as hazardous to investment, so to speak. It originated during the New Deal when FDR was in office. Green neighborhoods were labeled as good, and red neighborhoods were labeled as bad. African-American and other minority groups were prevented from getting home loans because of this. From 1934 to 1968, 98% of home loans were granted to white families, which is a very, very overwhelming majority. And even after the anti-discriminatory laws were passed, red families couldn't afford to go green. The effects of redlining keep schools segregated by race to this day.
As a quick question, the 98%, was that in Waterloo, was that national, national number?
National statistics, sir. And through our research, we've also found that some banks may still charge black families with the same credit scores as whites, higher rates on their loans. A superfund site is any section of US land that has been contaminated with hazardous waste. They are officially identified by the Environmental Protection Agency as candidates for cleanup, and the state of these areas pose a genuine risk to human health and/or the environment, usually afflicted with soil or groundwater contamination are the most common problems. They're often located near processing plants, landfills, manufacturing facilities, or former manufacturing facilities. One of our nearby sites that Ms. Yates helped point us to is the Chamberlain Manufacturing Facility. It's located at 550 Esther Street in Waterloo here. They produced metal washer ringers, aluminum awnings, refrigerator shelves, et cetera. We have found, there are research that is responsible for toxic chemicals such as arsenic, chloroform, acetone, mercury, and other potentially dangerous chemicals, very dangerous chemicals. The area was reported by the EPA in 2014 to be a very significant health risk, with risks for like cancer, and we'll get into that in some of the later slides. But that's what a superfund site is. I'm going to step to the back of the line now and let the next person speak.
Okay, so as Levi said, the Chamberlain site was located on Esther Street, and we specifically chose to compare you and I's campus to Waterloo because we live there, we go to school there, and we wanted to know about the environmental impacts around us. The superfund site is near Little Gates Park where children come to play, and it's close to residential areas. And if you look on the Waterloo map in the orange section, the plus is where the Chamberlain site is located. And then whether a superfund site is up and running or not, it still poses danger.
Lead poisoning is when a person has too much lead in their body. This is most common in children because they tend to put things in their mouths, which can contain lead. It can also come from their drinking water or inhaling lead due to a building or possibly their own homes. Elevated levels of lead can harm children's central nervous systems, cause behavioral problems, learning disabilities, and reduce IQ. Lead poisoning is still an issue in Black Hawk County because of older homes which minorities tend to live in.
Okay, so this again is another map that shows between you and I in Waterloo. And Waterloo has a huge discrepancy between all the percentiles because of the older homes compared to other areas. And those older homes can contain lead in their paint, which as Karen said, harm children.
Hi, I'm Victoria Walde. So through different sources, we have seen that Waterloo air quality is good. To be exact, the air quality index, or AQI, is usually between 10 and 20. To give you an idea, as we can see in that graph, the higher this number is, the worse for people's health. As is logical, we have found that the worst air quality is around industrial areas. But what really concerns us is that usually black and ethnic minorities' neighborhoods are around these areas. On the other hand, we have searched information about radon, that it's a highly radioactive gas that comes from the ground and enters into residential buildings. It's really hard to find it because it's colorless and odorless. And this gas causes a lot of damage to people, such as DNA alteration and lung cancer. And also one thing we want to point out is that there's no air quality lab in the Black Hawk County.
So as Victoria said, the air quality in Waterloo is good according to the AQI, which is why you don't see major discrepancies between these two maps. This image shows that Black Hawk County's invasive cancer incidence rates are higher than the state's average and are one of the highest in Iowa, at 85 to 91 per 100,000 people.
So we'd like to conclude this presentation by saying that there are clear disadvantages among people living near superfund sites, and poses a very great risk to their health. Said groups do not deserve this lower quality of life, and something needs to be done about these disparities so that they can thrive. Healthier living areas can ensure happier, safer communities for this next generation if someone acts now. Do we want to show the resources? Okay, that will be all. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. What program are you guys in?
Program or class? We're part of the American Ethnic and Racial Minorities Class that you and I.
All right, so thank you very much for your thoughtful research, information that you presented. And one of the reasons why I even chose to even run for city council was because of the Chamberlains area, which was one of several areas that I thought for too long we needed to do some things about it. We're taking proactive steps, and as you know, through these processes, it takes a while to get there. We've challenged the EPA, we've challenged Doofuschwa, believe it or not. That's who actually owns Chamberlain. So I want to thank you guys for your work, and that level of advocacy is one that I learned when I was in college too, which has shaped my life to this today. So thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Don't give up, still keep challenging, and working with the community is find solutions. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Right now, we would like to call up Mrs. Joy Briscoe. Are you in the audience? So I think you have a presentation. You got the little black book out.
I do have the little black book out. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. How is everyone today? I want to say thank you to you young people for doing that.
State your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry about that. Joy Briscoe, I am the founder of Shift Youth Opportunity Accelerator. We're located at 131 Tower Park Drive over in, over in the high. And so kind of these young people is really the mission of the work that we do. We really try to ignite entrepreneurial innovation for the community, and we believe in the power of public partner, private partnerships. Some of the things that we've been able to accomplish is 100% of our high school seniors have went on either to be employed or on to post-secondary education. And so when you hear things about Waterloo to the negative, we're working contra of that. We are addressing disparity head-on, working together with our collaborative partners, and really going to be instruments of change. And young people like yourselves are really gonna be some of the people that do that. So I commend you for doing that research, and thank you for taking the time to invest in our community. And so along that line, I'm really, really excited about the next stage of some of the things we're gonna be rolling out from the Shift Youth Opportunity Accelerator. As I started with saying, we believe in public-private partnerships. And so one of those public-private partnerships is we're gonna be working with a partner, Sherman Wise, and Rodney Anderson from All In Grocers to really ensure that we're providing equitable opportunities and employment availability for everyone. And so we've got some news we want to share. I'm gonna go ahead and call up Rodney Anderson to kind of share this information with us.
Rodney Anderson, 403 Franklin Street. Today, I don't speak well, Joy, I just get straight to the point. We wanted to come here today with a few of our friends to honor a couple of people. One of those people was by our side all the way up till now with All In Grocers. As everyone knows, it's been a fight, been a struggle, but hurdles are jumped, here we are now, right? Okay, so, right? Okay, okay. So basically, we want to go ahead and, you know, there's a couple of people that we want to point out that has always had our back, no matter what was going on, and making sure that everything was what it's supposed to be. And one of those people, she couldn't be here tonight, is Ms. Willie Mae Wright.
And so even though Mother Wright couldn't be here tonight, she has been a formidable force and just a powerhouse in our community. And so what we're doing on behalf of All In Grocers in partnership with the Waterloo Community Foundation is we are creating a $2,000 scholarship that's going towards individuals that are pursuing innovation and entrepreneurship in the Waterloo community. And it's going to be on behalf of Mother Wright because we know that without her doing a lot of the work and laying a lot of the ground, we wouldn't be looking at the most diverse city council that we have today. We wouldn't have this room full of all these powerful people in business and industry. And so we thank you for sharing your mother with us, because I know how hard that is when you have family members that are public servants. It comes with sacrifice. We appreciate that. We appreciate that. And so get ready, come on, come on. All right, all right, and so thank you very much. We believe in giving flowers while flowers are, while they're here, and celebrating the people now. So that's a part of the celebration we have. There'll be more to come, and so please look for that. But we're gonna be working with our Waterloo school and our Waterloo Career Center. Shout out to the Career Center, get your kids over there, to make sure that as students want to pursue education, entrepreneurship, that they have that avenue to do just that. And it's gonna be on behalf and in the name of Mother Wright. So we're really excited about that. So let's give a hand, applause again. So everyone will know, I am Willie Mae Wright's youngest daughter, Yvonne Davis. And on behalf of Willie Mae Wright, I would just like to say thank you for thinking of me, and yes, giving me my flowers while I yet live. And since this is this holiday season, I want to first of all say, Feliz Navidad. Happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah.
And the second person, this person gave money even before the banks did, right? So I never forgot her and everything else. I'm gonna stop because I'll get emotional, everybody know I'm an emotional person. So Ms. Wanda Martinez.
So Mrs. Wanda Martinez, we know that you are a long-term educational advocate. So we're doing another $2,000 scholarship on behalf of All In Grocers through Shift and in collaboration with the Waterloo Community Foundation. And not only are we doing the scholarship, but Rodney and Dr. Johnson, Mickey Johnson, they said, Joy, we need to endow it. So we're hoping that as people see these scholarships and the difference this makes, that other people will actually invest via the Waterloo Community Foundation so that we can support people for years to come. And this scholarship is gonna go to individuals that are either pursuing post-secondary education or pursuing some type of skills, because we know we need skilled workforce and we need an educated workforce. And so that's what we're gonna be investing in.
I know that's right. I'm not going to cry, but I do thank you, I appreciate this. Education is important. Our young people are important, and we can't give up on them. So I thank you both. I thank all of you, and stand by our kids. Even when they fall, they can't get up without our help. Thank you.
I believe that's it, but look for more to come from us. We're gonna be having it at the Waterloo Foundation. I think we're in a unique time as community members to really kind of change. The mayor, they rolled out this awesome campaign behind the W now. And we're gonna be looking to make that W a symbol of pride, a symbol of honor, and a symbol that other community members can look from to see how we're doing transformational initiatives right here in Waterloo, Iowa. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, thank you so much for flying the W. And for two very worthy human beings that has blessed this community for a long time. So I want to thank you so much for bringing the good news to the city council and to this entire community, and also philanthropically giving back to our young people. I think every councilperson up here would agree that you can never do enough to impact the lives of our young people and make sure that we continue to support them in every way that we possibly can.
Oh, Rodney too, this was on his brain.
All right. Absolutely. Don't interrupt me again while I'm up here on the council. That's a good interruption. So yeah, so thank you so much for your foresight and leadership in making this a reality. So appreciate it. Thank you for the good news. We are in oral presentations as well. It's your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. So please come up to the rostrum, state your name and address for the people, and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening. Comments, so tell me my name, Priscilla County now. And I'm coming, I, I, I found out that the city can't do anything about the laws, the landlord tenant laws, because I called the housing incorporation in Des Moines. But I do feel like the city can do anything, something about me being unlawfully evicted from my residence after 11 years, just because the landlord, Martin Reap, didn't want to do the repairs. And also too, I have a rebuttal. One of the city council members had told me that somebody on the city council tried to help me, and I turned it down. I, I, I'm not no fool. I'm living in the women's shelter. Why would I turn anybody down that's trying to help me to get housing? So that was wrong. And I asked them, who was the individual? They couldn't say who the individual was because they didn't want to call no name. But no one on this city council has tried to help me. And I was unlawfully illegally evicted from my residence. And yes, I told you all, until someone get me some justice, I'll be coming here to every city council meeting because it was wrong. I paid my rent there 11 years and got unlawfully evicted, and no one has done anything about it yet. However, God is good. My father found me a place, but I'm still fighting against Martin for unlawfully evicted me and taking my rent all the time. They weren't supposed to be taking my rent when the city council had asked them to do repairs. They did that, and then took my rent on August 5th, as I said before, and evicted me on August 26th, and it was wrong. Someone in the city can do something about what Martin's did to me. Their attorneys, one attorney all the way in Des Moines, they got a case overload. The rest of them won't return my powers. Someone can do something about this situation. Martin should be held accountable for what they did to me. And I'll be coming to the city council meeting to somebody get me some justice because it was wrong. And I know someone in this city, someone on this city council can do something about it. It was wrong. Instead of telling my eviction is too early when I get ready to get an apartment, what about why was I evicted? Was it lawfully or unlawfully? The eviction laws need to be changed in Waterloo. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the city council and mayor?
Hi, my name's Leon DeGueye. I'm at 204 Baltimore Street. So yeah, I just wanted to also, also voice or share my concern from the community regarding Ms. Priscilla's situation and the injustice that was served to her. But we really want to, you know, drive some more ideas and recommendations to the city to propose- to propose to you to help, to help, you know, make, make this city more fairer and for everyone that's living here. There's a lot of rental housing in the city, so I'm glad that there's a lot more, seems to be a lot more investment going toward rental housing, whether that's like repairing these, these properties that are dilapidated into something else. I know that in this community vision plan, elevate housing is one goal and it looks like you're going to redevelop, renovate, or improve 800 residences in Waterloo in eight years. And that's to act, to provide access to that capital. So maybe we can just know a little bit more about where we're at with that. And I know that there is a strategic plan in the works and I got a, a survey for that. And I would like to know more about how, if there's any other engagement for the way that the city can actually know some substance about some issues regarding housing in ways that we can, the city can start, like Ms. Priscilla was saying, address these unlawful evictions. When she says unlawful eviction, it's a, it's a when a landlord will retaliate against a tenant for going to the city to exercise her, you know, her rights to what's, you know, in city ordinances regarding her health, safety, health and safety. And also I know that some of the issues that were, you know, brought up when we talked about this was the need for more ordinances to sort of address these issues. It was passed this past summer. Thank you guys all for that. But, you know, we, as we understand, there's, that, that means that the city needs to invest more in this, invest in staff. More rental inspectors are needed, of course. We'll keep saying that. But I will say that I did see a part-time position open so that I'm glad that there's that. But we do need more full-time positions in rental housing and also more staff dedicated to tenants regarding like addressing tenant, the rights of tenants in this state, in the state. And also really advocating for policy that has the eviction courts following a more, a more just adjudication process that doesn't favor landlords. Currently that eviction courts do favor landlords and we would like the city to stand behind us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Going a second time, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
As long as Mr. Dunn's here, I'm glad he is, I just wanted to ask him a quick question on the non-bargaining employee compensation study and where we were at on it. Because when we passed that resolution months ago, our goal was to have it done prior to budget time. So that if we could make, needed to make some adjustments, if the funds allowed, we were able to do that. Would he be able to speak to that or?
We haven't allocated any money to it yet. I think we talked about the use of ARPA funds to be able to do it. And we're currently almost at the point where we know how much we have left over from the broadband portion of it, but I have not allocated any money towards it. So you want to give an update?
I mean, have we taken, have we got estimates?
No.
No?
No.
When my meeting with him was on September 6th, he actually mentioned that he had some ideas on cost.
Lance, Lance Dunn, HR Director, yeah, we actually have received several quotes from different places. It's just a matter of, one, having the funds to, to get the survey or the compensation piece done. So once funds have been allocated, we can decide on which process we'll take or which one we would like to choose. So it's, it's been done. It's just a matter of having the funds to get, get it going.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You're good, Lance. Before, I do have a comment for Jamie, but I do want to say to you all out there, we do appreciate you coming to the council meeting and we'd like for you to stay.
Hey, well, just, hey, can some of you just stay for a few minutes? Because after she finished, I just have a quick announcement, quick announcement, and then you can take off.
Or you don't have to take off if you want to stay and, you know, listen and learn, figure out what we all are doing up here. That would be great too. The Fourth Street Bridge, do you know when that's going to be done? Because it like opens, then it closes, then it opens again, and I'm, I'm ready.
That's a good question. Hopefully, we're getting close. Probably two to three weeks. I know that we are working to get Mr. Shakespeare here in the next couple of weeks to start the programming. The contractor's doing their best to get the work done. We try to open it when we can to let traffic through, but it's probably going to be another couple of weeks before it's completed.
Okay. Will it, will it open again and then just for, so you guys plan to open it again and then close it?
Yeah, it's going to be open and closed off and on for the next couple of weeks yet, especially as Mr., once Mr. Shakespeare gets here and he'll be out on the bridge at night doing all the programming and changing all that stuff. So there's some concerns with having, especially at night, having those lights on, the strobes and a strobe effect going and different things as he's working on programming all that. So yeah, it's going to be opened and closed periodically for the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. And then one more thing, you're good. Thank you, Jamie. I usually have my Ward Three meetings on the last Sunday of the month, but this month is Christmas and so I will see you all again in the beginning of January on the last Sunday of the month at the Waterloo Public Library, but I remind you of that again later. Just letting you know that we'll know, there won't be a, a meeting this month because it's Christmas. Unless y'all want to bring me a gift. Oh, we can't accept gifts. Just kidding. Don't do that.
$2.99.
Yeah, so you're good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, this is for Noel. So Noel, we saw that the state issued their sort of sixth round of Destination Iowa funding. Do we have any update on, on where our joint project with Cedar Falls on the waterway is at in that process?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. So I've not seen anything from the state yet for, on our specific grant application.
But we're all, we are all, on our end, we're submitted in all those types of good things.
That is correct.
Okay.
Anything else really quickly? All right, so earlier we had a meeting to talk about the Fourth Ward City Council seat. And the reason I mention it, because I know some of you live in the Fourth Ward. And so we're going to have an application process. We're going to select someone for the seat. We're working on how we'll do a public presentation so the community can at least hear those that are interested. Now, the thing about it, normally, you know, my belief is that we go through an entire election process and let all of you choose. The challenge is, it is December. Councilman Jerome Amis has accepted a position. I don't know why he wanted to go to the legislature, but, but with that, his term is up here, that second week of January. So that gives us a very short amount of time to, to get someone on the city council. Now, the thing about it, the election is in November of next year. And so if we do an election process, there won't be a representative for several months. But if we go through a application process, that is given to the state for the city council to be able to select a person to represent the, the ward that does not have a person. So the goal would be, is to have that application process and have someone on board by that second week in January. So on December 19th, we will develop a process. It will be a very public process and we'll have applications out there for people to submit their information. We had talked about having at least 20 to 25 signatures. It's not required, but we had talked about that because then that way, we know for a fact that this person has at least gone out there and talked to 20, 25 people. So we can't say they didn't talk to anybody, they're just throwing this on here. And then we're going to work on some type of open presentation for people to be able to see at a destination, not to be disclosed yet, we're working on it. And then the city council, from those meetings and the application and resume, will select a person. That person is only in office until that next election. Incumbents don't win all the time. So, but we need to get somebody in this seat moving forward. So I just wanted to make the announcement because I know some of you live in the area or have businesses in the area as well. But it's for the city council seat for the Fourth Ward. So just putting that information out to you. So that's the announcement portion that I wanted to make. This past Thursday, we had a State of the City and, you know, it was, it was a, a good event. It was our opportunity to talk about the successes that we've had per, per this past year, to talk about what we're currently engaged in and then where we're going to move towards the future. Tremendous amount of projects were mentioned, you know, you know, work with infrastructure and the way that we can transform this community forever, but last, but not least, not forgetting about the areas within our community that need more investment. So it was a great opportunity on Thursday. The past Tuesday, we held a smart city meeting. The city has entered into a partnership with Honeywell. You've probably heard of Honeywell for different products. Honeywell has worked internationally with cities across this world and they have selected five cities within the United States to help form a smart city program for us. And a smart city program helps us to make smarter decisions. It helps us to make future-driven decisions and it helps us to be able to really use data to make even greater informed decisions. You know, we are a very industrial city, but we are in the midst of needing to transform so that we can meet the needs of tomorrow by building the infrastructure today. And so we have engaged in that partnership. So there's a lot of incredible things going on. And last but not least, the project that Councilwoman Wilder had just mentioned, if you're not familiar with it, is the Fourth Street Bridge project. To me, the Fourth Street Bridge is one of the most iconic bridges in the entire state of Iowa. Bridges, as you know, are, are important. They're a way to help you get over, but you know, for a long time, there's always been the perception of the bridge being the dividing line for communities. And so we are working hard. Sometimes it seems like it's a snail's pace. Sometimes it could seem like it's a Ferrari-like lorry drives. But, but we are, we are trying to get there. And so the project we have right now is a project that if you've seen the towers that are on both sides of the Fourth Street Bridge, those towers and then the lighting that's going to take place within the Fourth Street Bridge and through philanthropic giving to make this project a reality, is going to be one of the single most transformational projects for the Cedar River. And almost all of the funding came from nonprofits as well. So not a lot with regards to city tax dollars. And so it's special and so it's taken a little while to do it. So please forgive the work on the bridges, which we know Park Avenue is being completely reconstructed. We know that 11th Street Bridge is being reconstructed and Fourth Street Bridge is under renovation. So there shouldn't be a couple more weeks, but hopefully it will be something that was used as a dividing line, something that's used as a unifying, unifying attraction to this community. So wow, that's all. I meant to be out of here by about 6:15. No, no, but you know, thank you all for the, for the help you did today and the acknowledgement of our incredible people.
I make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments are closed.
Right, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bell's Payment 181 for November 28th in the amount of $4,246,609.78 and for December 5th in the amount of $2,780,513.27.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council, anyone? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foise?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to get, make a couple acknowledgements. We have two appointments to park maintenance, two forestry apprenticeship positions. The first one is Tanner Cruz. Is that the council, is here? Would you please stand? And Adam, and Andrew Bronner, would you please stand? All right, we want to thank you. That's how you know they're ready to move this, this meeting forward. But we want to thank you guys for joining the family. Forestry is huge within this community and throughout this state. So we look forward to the incredible work that you guys will be able to do. So thank you for joining our team. All right, I think we have one board appointment maybe.
Rich Kurtinbach.
Rich Kurtinbach to the telecommunications board. This is a reappointment as well. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for a request by Bruce Gorman to rezonate 3.46 acres northeast of 2600 East Shawless Road from A-1 Agricultural District to C-P Planned Commercial District to construct a new restaurant.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing closed. I mean, open.
All right.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to a new restaurant going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time. An ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a request by Bruce Gorman to rezonate 3.46 acres northeast of 2600 East Shawless Road with A, from A-1 Agricultural District to CP Planned Commercial District to construct a new restaurant with conditions.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Let's go, Mr. Bozen and then since you read it.
Well, thank you, sir. I think it's exciting to get a Jethro's here, here in town. I'm looking forward to it. My, my concern, my, my one concern is the same concern I had when I voted down Dollar General is because it's on a 45 mile an hour curve. And the traffic's going to be exiting into the curve. So I would hope that when this passes, I'm confident it will pass, that, that we will take a look at that stretch of Shawless from, from Dyers Road to, to Hess because we've got four stoplights within a half a mile. Some of them are within a couple hundred feet of each other. And that maybe we could look at lowering that speed limit to 35 miles an hour because as soon as you cross the new roundabout, it's going to be 35 still. So then I, I, I would alleviate all my concerns with that, that entryway dropping out into a 45 mile an hour curve.
All right, thank you.
I just want to thank Noel and his staff and Mr. Gorman for making this investment. We get a lot of phone calls as elected officials, but very rarely do we get ones where folks are very thankful about what we're doing. And, and this is one of those things. I've got a lot of phone calls from my ward. Folks are very excited. So thank you to city staff and all who were involved in this.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foise?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foise?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that is for the request by A-line EDS to rezonate approximately 0.14 acres from C-1 Commercial District to C-1, C-Z Conditional, Conditional Zoning District for additional storage yard area in conjunction with the previously approved 24,000 square foot warehouse and maintenance facility located west of 722 Dearborn Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing, receive and file oral written comments and recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by A-line EDS to rezonate approximately zero point one four acres from C dash one commercial district to C dash one, C dash Z conditional zoning district for additional storage yard area in conjunction with a previously approved twenty-four thousand square foot warehouse and maintenance facility located west of seven twenty-two Dearborn Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to-
Uh, nope. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to consider, pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Can someone take number four? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that's for amendment number three to the Wrath, Wrath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to expand the boundaries, update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. If you would like to address the council, state your name and address for the record.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I heard earlier that we need more affordable housing in town. I looked at the computer and saw the expansion that they're doing this for the TIF district. So are we planning and do we have someone interested in putting some affordable housing over there in a blighted area? Cause that's what it indicates on the, on the computer, that this is a blighted area. We have a lot of property in this town that we have purchased. And we don't seem to fill it in with anything. So again, we've asked a long time ago to not continue to expand the TIFs because that just takes more money out of the taxpayer's pocket. But yet now we're going to do another redevelopment. The Wrath Administration Building is still standing there deteriorating. We've done nothing with that. When does it stop?
So let me ask you a question. Is your question, is your que, is it more of a comment? Or is it that you want to know if housing is going there? Or you want to know what's going in there? Or you want to know about the Wrath Administration Building?
All the above. We've done nothing with any of it. So therefore we're going to expand this TIF. And we have nothing that's going, no, no prospects for it. Sometime ago, when we bought the Johnstone Building, I asked if we had an interest in it. No, it's for future economic development. And I hear that answer all the time. Thank you.
So no, I know housing is now going in it. So we can subtract that for right now. But can you tell when there's no expansion or anything going into that area? Can you give us, tell us if that's true or not?
Sure, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I don't know if they can bring up the map from this item for the expansion area, but it's basically going along the Dubuque Road corridor. We have quite a few sites in there that are kind of unsightly, some former salvage used areas, a fill site, a borrow pit site. So we're basically putting the TIF district designation over there so we can help clean up some of these sites and give ourselves all the options. We need to help businesses reinvest in this area, see expansions. We just saw a previous item on the council for an expansion in this area of businesses. So we're actually seeing some good development in the Wrath area overall with the Crystal Expansion. So we're, we're very excited about that. We are working with a group on the Wrath Administration Building as well. And hopefully we'll have some good news to share with you on that.
So let me ask you a question. So you know, right now, obviously I don't, I don't have a timeline of when the, you know, series, City of Waterloo was started and how it progressed over time. But you know, when you take a look at this and on the surface, if you're just a citizen looking at it, you may think, oh my gosh, like what, what are you doing? But can you tell, yeah, it's you?
I was trying to see if the map was up there.
It's you. But, but what I, what I want to understand and what, why I understand what people need to understand. Do these areas just develop itself? Or for an area as blighted and which is much needed support, do you have to do things to try to do it? I mean, we can take a look at North Crossing, which was a dilapidated building. And now we're starting to see some vitality from the changes. But you know, what do you have to do to try to jumpstart supporting these areas?
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the area we're expanding into alone, you know, none of them are greenfield sites. So they're all brownfield sites of some type, either with former commercial operations, former industrial operations. We know there's some environmental concern on, on one of the expansion areas that we'll be looking at. So we'll be using our EPA grants to go in there, determine what is really there, what is not, and what are their actions we need to take just to make them presentable to someone like a company to come in and then want to invest in the area.
So, all right, so you gotta do something different to get something different. So, uh, counsel, other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Are we just on the public?
Oh, we still got to-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's my fault. Anyone else with comments on this item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an area of slum and blight and an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bozen?
Thank you. Noel, it's from, from reading the information that you provided us, the Wrath TIF has been, was, was it initiated in nineteen ninety? Correct?
Which year?
Nineteen ninety.
Sounds correct.
And so now we're thirty-two years into the Wrath TIF. We don't seem to retire TIF. We at one time released some funding in the Northeast Site, correct?
That is correct.
Did we take that back in?
We cannot take the funds back in once they're released.
So there, so that, that's been released.
There's funds released from the Northeast Site. The, the site was not released itself.
Okay, gotcha, okay. But my question is, is on the Wrath TIF, is now the Wrath is sitting at about one point two million dollars cash balance based on the paperwork that you filed last, last council meeting. And then, but the Northeast Site industrial TIF looks like it's five hundred and forty-eight thousand in the whole. And the Crossroads TIF is one million, thirty-four thousand in the whole, based on that paperwork. How, how do we recoup this when we, when we're, when we're going backwards on, on TIFs? Because the Wrath TIF seems to be doing somewhat better than a lot of other TIFs. Well, compared to Midport Development, that's a, or the, the East Side United, that's a, that's a big TIF. But how do we, how do we fix the shortfalls in TIFs outside of annexing more land? Because we have a number of, based on being on the planning and zoning liaison, we have a number of, of items that are going to be looking at in that area by A-line and, and for, for future development. My, my issue on the TIFs is that any new growth in the city of Waterloo is, is generally in, in a TIF. If it's residential, it's in an area that, that we're going to go with the three-year tax abatements. And, and we don't seem to be bringing any money back in to support the general fund. We're supporting the TIF. So by annexing that land, the, the twenty-four thousand square foot warehouse would be back into the TIF. Correct?
That is correct.
So I, I just, we're going into a budget season that, that I'm just, we just don't seem to be able to create infill and, and tax base outside of TIFs. And that, that's concerning because it, it, then the burden as, as our wages go up, our benefits go up, our, our commodities go up, all falls on the taxpayer, not on the TIF. So how, how do we rectify that? And how do we get TIFs that are upside down back, back in the block?
Sure. So I mean, you know, first off, every TIF project, there is a portion released to the debt service levy. So it does help into the levy fund. So it helps the general fund stay having, having to compensate for that. So all projects will have a, a good positive impact.
I didn't mean to interrupt, sir, but is that the land that's released or additional funding?
For every, for every project, there's a portion of that project's new tax base going into the debt service levy. So every project is actually positive to the entire city. You know, there's different strategies with different TIFs. There's economic development TIFs, there's blighted TIFs. There's, there's a twenty-year timeframe on the economic development ones. There's not a timeframe on the blighted ones. You know, going through the city, we released some funds from the Northeast TIF. We've released some area from the Martin Road TIF. We've released some area from the San Martin TIF over the years because they ran out of, of their twenty-year timeframe. So there has been some funds. There's actually some more coming up, probably the next three or four years in both of the Martin and the San Martin again. Looking at, you know, how do you continue to make the TIFs do what they're supposed to? Which again, you know, the city's getting probably ninety percent of the funds in a TIF versus our normal forty-eight cents per, for the, for the dollar. So it's, it's a lot more financial benefits to the city to do infrastructure improvements, road improvements and all that into the TIF districts because we're paid back faster. But obviously, like you said, hopefully then you get to a point where you don't have any more infrastructure anymore, things like that, so you can start releasing it in the other parts of the city. So you know, and from, from my standpoint, it's, it's a matter of continuing to work in the TIFs to create those shovel-ready sites and to bring the projects in. The Northeast Site is a good example. We, you know, we just had an eight million dollar control building built out there. So that'll start to pump money back into that TIF to get it out of the negative. You know, as we continue to work in the other TIF districts like Wrath. You know, the reason we're starting to see some increment created in there is because we've had some large projects in there. And granted, with those large projects come rebates. But again, the rebates run out at some time. Same as the housing, you know, you noted that we have the CLURA to help the housing or the CURA, depending upon where they build it at. You know, on, on year four, after the taxes catch up, but after the three years of abatement, on year four, we're making money. The other thing I would note with all projects is the taxes are one element. We're also trying to get garbage revenue, water revenue, sewer revenues, people living here, shopping, creating a need for businesses to develop here. So there's a lot of components that go into the projects and the, and the, the things that we're doing. And, and we think we're seeing some positive results.
So how much have we released from the Northeast Site?
We were just looking at those numbers. Bridget, do you remember?
You can get them to me.
Okay, we can get them to you. I mean, I, I want to say it's, it's, it's probably a couple million.
Because I, going into, what I'm talking about is going taxable income coming in or taxable dollars coming in.
Correct. I mean, the finance department, the planning department, you know, we're working on the TIFs. We're working on projects and how they relate, not only to the projects and shovel-ready, but how they relate back to the budget and you and the mayor and council.
Okay. Cause I was, I was, I'm, I'm really concerned like this, like I said, it's a thirty-two year TIF so far.
It's, it's a tough area. I mean, it's, it's probably our biggest brownfield area. There's a super fund there too as well. When they were talking about the presentations earlier, there's more, there's more sites out that we're always working to clean up.
But we don't like, like the, the Dearborn area and those, those areas that you just described north of, of Dubuque Road. We don't necessarily have to be in a TIF to qualify for brownfield funding.
Correct, correct. There, there's a lot of state funding, like the state brownfield tax credit. So the state, a lot of the state programs will have necessary matches from the local government. So a lot of times if they're in the TIF, we can easily match it with our general incentive programs to make it easier for them to apply for those state programs.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Let me ask you a quick question too. So Noel, when, um, so if there is, so just thinking on a layman's level, if, if right now, uh, an area, let's just say it generates twenty million dollars worth of tax base. And we go in like, kind of like University Avenue and we go in and we put a TIF over that area. Does the city still build upon the twenty million dollars? And then any new value that's created from the structure of the increment finance within that, that comes from there, correct?
That is correct. Yep, there's a base level set when you establish the TIF there. And so then anything after that goes into the, most of it goes into the TIF, some still comes out.
So let me ask another question too. So if, if I, let's just say if there's a, a road and we need to build a road within that TIF area, or we need to put in a sewer infrastructure, right? Well, I guess sewer come from fees. What, what does the money that's kept within that TIF district? What does that go towards? Like, is it just for the deals or is it infra, what is it, what does it go to?
Yes, to all the above. So you know, if we're having to put in infrastructure and we have to bond money to do it, it's going to repay those bonds. If we're buying the land to make it happen, we're, we're repaying ourselves through the TIF for bonding the money to, to buy the land. The rebates that go to the companies are paid out of the TIF. Wetlands, um, thanks for bringing that one up, Jamie. But you know, we're dealing with environmental issues, dealing with wetland issues. So at times there's, there's other things that we find out when we're in those areas working to make shovel-ready sites of, of having to deal with things.
And so if that money, if that money, one, we know that it's a challenge in some areas to even attract businesses to those areas. Like the one that we're talking about right now. I mean, the, they, they named it a slum and blight TIF for a reason, right? Which is very tough terminology. But it's hard to attract things to go there, right? So if you didn't have the, if you didn't utilize that money within that TIF to make the improvements or structured deals, where would the money have to come from?
If we don't have any debt owed in the TIF, then we have to release it. So we're not spending any money in there.
I'm saying, if you found a place that potentially wants to go there, and you didn't have any money within the TIF to do infrastructure or whatever it was, so they can go there, where would the money come from?
Historically, then we would bond for it, and then it would be part of the CIP process, other than it's, it's not repaid with GO bonds. It would be repaid with the TIF, tax-based created TIF bonds.
Uh, I think, I think like this conversation over the last ten years or so, it's, um, you know, in some aspects, it can become a dirty word. Uh, when in actuality, if you take a look around the state, uh, it's been a very successful tool, if it's used correctly. We do know some of our other cities, uh, not to say any names, have maybe not used it accordingly to the way that the state would like them to use it. I mean, but i- i- it's a tool to be able to do that. Either we get it from here, or we're going to get it from here. But that, that money comes to be able to structure deals, to be able to put infrastructure in, to be able to work with the wetlands. That money comes from the additional tax base that's generated by the deals that you structured and using, and using to fund. So, thank you.
No, you're exactly right, Mayor. I mean, the TIF, the TIF empowerment comes out of the state code section of urban renewal. So it was put in there to clean up blighted areas. It was put in there to redevelop areas. A lot of, of, of communities use it to create large industrial parks on greenfields, which is, which is allowed by state code as well. But that the city of Waterloo has tended to try and, and recreate some of these other existing areas as much as we can.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I do have one more question for Noel. Noel, you, you talk about cleaning up brownfield sites and superfund sites. Can you talk about the relationship with the EPA and how you communicate with them to clean up the sites for many of the-
So the city of Waterloo right now, I think we're on our fourth, uh, EPA assessment grant, um, that we've gotten probably over the last, uh, twelve to thirteen years. Um, and so one of the first things we have to offer for a company coming in and looking at a, I'm, I'm gonna call it questionable site, is that we have the ability to go and do the phase one. The phase one is basically a historical report of the site to say what's there now, what's been there in the past, and what might have been there that nobody knew about. Um, if they don't find anything scary in that, then it's, then you're generally moving on. Um, so think of like a greenfield site, even if you did a phase one there, but sometimes there's an old farmhouse that was there, so they're worried, was there something buried under the ground to heat it? Um, so they'll look at it for that. Uh, if they are concerned with something being on the site, then we go to the phase two. That's where you're going in and you're looking at, because there's some pipes sticking out of the ground, or there was a gas station, uh, there. By the way, there was a gas station, I think, on every corner in downtown from my, from my experience. Um, but you're going in there, looking for, are there any tanks? Uh, is there any records in the DNR? And then we'll go in and do drilling or do, uh, subsurface explorer ex- exploration. But we'll kinda go move from there to get the site where, again, where it's, where it's a shovel-ready site, and it's a site that someone's willing to go in and redevelop.
So then when you find that, say there is something, what is the process for getting that site shovel-ready? Is there like a, a cleanup process?
There's cleanup grants we can look at. There's also responsible parties. So in the, the case of the Chamberlain Site, which was mentioned earlier, uh, Duchess Swa is out of the Chicago area. They're the parent company of what was Chamberlain. So they're still a responsible party to go after to say, hey, we found something here, and they're gonna have to take steps with the EPA to clean it up.
And just really quickly, uh, there is a website called thenewwaterloo.com. And they have a listing of, uh, projects that we've been able to do. Uh, I think it's Howard R. Green, um, our engineer, environmental engineer, has worked with us. Anywhere from one-twenty Center Street, the Eighteenth Street Bridge, Eighth Street Infill Housing, uh, the Cedar Valley Sportsplex Site, Dan Gable Museum, Downtown Redevelopment, the former CMC Site, which is now Public Works, Frito Bakery, Grand Hotel. So while there's conversations about not, um, not being as effective or aggressive on it, but there's a ton of projects. Uh, this was Factory City USA, um, you know, what, in the fifties and sixties? So we had a lot of brownfield sites from all the factories and all the, uh, contamination, environmental hazards. And so, uh, we've been s- very successful over the years, uh, but we're not even close to being done yet. So thenewwaterloo.com, uh, is a great opportunity for you to see some of those sites that are there. Noel, please sit down.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Sorry, Noel. So is the amount, something that you mentioned that I found pretty interesting is the nine, ninety percent that comes back to us. So I've, I've known that already, but the release of funds back into the general fund was something that escaped me a little. So is the amount of value that is removed through expanding this TIF equal to or greater than the amount that is replaced through the new number? I know it's a weird, I've been trying to write it down and figure out how to say this. But if you're, if we are taking forty-eight cents normally for a general fund, now we're getting ninety percent. Is the amount of money that is released back-
But we're only getting ninety, ninety percent of anything added.
Added, okay. There we go.
So everything on this map, if it's two million dollars right now and nothing else happens out there and we don't do anything, it just remains as it was before the TIF. But if we get a new project out there, then we will get more money.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, to the, uh, resolution, the first one.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance, providing that the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described Wrath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payments of principal and interest on loans, monies, advance to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce? Mr. Bozen?
No.
Yes.
Oops, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Foyce. And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Thank you. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the-
Sorry. Uh, number five is actually canceled. I'm sorry, we didn't get that updated on the agenda. And we did reset the date of hearing under the consent agenda, so we can skip all that.
Read that into the record.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to-
Nope, just number five is canceled.
Number five, so the South Street, um, West Knights Mini, uh, Street Mini Roundabout, uh, grant, um, approval is canceled.
All right. Six, seven, and eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a three-year Cedar Valley Stormwater Partnership Agreement in the amount of, uh, two, two thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars for the Blackhawk County Conservation Board for contracted stormwater education and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a request by the city of Waterloo to dedicate a sixty-foot sanitary sewer drainage and public utility easement over the west sixty foot of Lot One of the Waterloo Air and Rail Park First Edition, located near, near the southeast corner of Levercy and Warp Drive. Number eight is adopting a resolution approving a request by the city of Waterloo to dedicate a sixty-foot sanitary sewer drainage and public utility easement over the west sixty, uh, feet of Waterloo Air and Rail Park Third Edition, located in the northeast corner of Levercy and Warp Drive.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with, uh, questions about, um, these three items, six, seven, and eight? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Katie Kluus and, uh, it's six-one-six Kingsley Avenue, and I work for Blackhawk County Conservation. And I'm just here if you have any questions about, um, the resolution or, eh, the contract in general.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being available.
Thank you.
Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, nine, ten, and eleven?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Resolution nine is a resolution approving the dedication of a sanitary sewer easement for Club Car Wash Waterloo LLC for an existing public sanitary sewer located at one-zero-zero-nine East San Martin Drive. Number ten is a resolution approving amendments to the professional services agreement with Magellan Advisors LLC in an amount not to exceed six hundred thirty thousand dollars, one hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents for the additional mileage of design, engineering, and permitting of a fiber optic network to the home, as well as associated travel costs, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number eleven is a resolution approving award of the Hotel Motel Tax Council Discretionary Fund to the Leisure Services twenty-two, twenty-two-three golf marketing campaign in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. The City of Waterloo Sportsplex twenty-two, twenty-two-three marketing campaign in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, and the North End Update in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these items? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Twelve and thirteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I moved to adopt a resolution approving an engagement letter with Piper Sandler and Co. for project finance services in conjunction with telecommunications utility broadband project. Number thirteen, a resolution approving the twenty-two-three hazardous material regional training center fee schedule.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, questions about these items?
Just had one.
Counsel, yes, sir.
For Chief Trulow.
Yes, sir. Where is he at?
He's, he's here today.
Not sure what you mean by that, Mr. Bozen, but Pat Trulow, Farchi.
Okay, uh, fir- first of all, I, I wanna thank you, you, you only have one council meeting left for your tenure as, as the chief. You're about the fourth lo- uh, longest-standing chief in the, in the city of Waterloo. I had the honor to work, have Pat work under my division, and I had the, the pleasure of working under Pat when he was the chief. My question, I'd still wanna thank you for all your service-
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Is how much, just how much are we raising the fees, percentage-wise? I went through them all, but we didn't have the old fees.
Right. So it, it varies for, uh, each, each of the classes. Some of the, uh, smaller raises were for some of our most popular classes that we teach out in the eleven counties that we serve through the northeast, uh, Northeast Iowa Response Group. So some of those percentages were pretty small, but I'd say on average, we're somewhere around the ten percent mark. Uh, we haven't, uh, looked at the fee schedule for a few years. We've made some changes at the training center. So we thought it would be an appropriate time to approach counsel and to get it into the record and have, uh, the fee schedule approved, uh, by this body.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
This isn't your last meeting, is it?
No, I've got one more.
Okay, okay. We'll just, won't show up.
He didn't move his mouth.
I didn't move my mouth.
Yes, I rescheduled it. I rescheduled it pertaining to, all right, so, um, it'll be Rose Pat Night, uh, in two weeks. So, uh, bring your, your greatest jokes, uh, and you can use curse words as well. Sorry, Pastor. Sorry, Pastor, but she said it's okay too. And, um, uh, so, and then I'd, one quick announcement after that. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?